Started, I'm going to call this city commission administrative meeting to order on April fifth, twenty twenty three. Um. First thing, I'd like to welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting.
Sorry.
All this city commission admin.
Terry.
Uh, we're pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's efforts to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam, of course, would you please call the role?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Shirtlet.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Collins is excused.
Great, thank you. Um, we will first move to the HCC representative. I believe we have Ms. Denise Roth-Berber.
Hi, can you all hear me now? I'm on the mute button.
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, um. Well, thank you. Um, I'm Denise Roth-Berber. I'm the HCC rep. Um, this afternoon, and we just have a quick report out. Um, we are going to be uh, doing some door hanging, uh, or door hangers. We're going to be distributing door hangers this spring to, in our efforts to increase our outreach to the community, let people know about us and solicit feedback. Um. We are also going to have a strategic planning session at our next meeting this, uh, April twenty sixth. Um, and then finally, the HCC is, we're looking forward to seeing the draft department budgets. We haven't seen any yet, but one of our main reasons for being, um, is to provide input on the city budget. So we would like to be able to see the department budget sooner than later, so we could have time to review and provide, uh, insightful comments on those. So if anyone can speak today as to when we could see the department budgets, um, I would appreciate that. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. I believe, I think the preliminary budget is, is coming in the next few weeks. We have not seen anything either. Um, but I know that they are working on finishing of um, that preliminary budget, and then it'll be posted, um, during the first budget sessions. Is that accurate? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Burton.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, that is correct. We do not have the preliminary budgets for review, but we're we're very close, and I think by the end of the week, uh, we will have worked out all the the details so that we can present, uh, to the commission. Um. And so, uh, at that point, we'll make sure that the Helena Citizens Council gets copied on those budgets as well. Mayor Pro Tem, we've talked in the past about, uh, the number of items lining up to come before the commission, and I think this agenda represents that. Uh. And so I've asked everybody to be very concise through today's meetings. Um. But, uh, you know, the commission can drive questions and however you want to approach that, but we'll try to be as concise as we can and as thorough as we can through this agenda. And, uh. That's all I have. Mayor Pro Tem.
Um. Yes.
Question for the manager. Um, I haven't been down on the names, but lately, but are there any, is there any more, uh, updates from Rodney's?
Um, I don't believe we've started as yet. But David's here.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, uh, Madam Burton. The, they're getting some traffic control set up, as everybody's probably aware, and they're, they're starting to look at getting work just kind of started in the intersection of Eleventh and Rodney and to try to finish out those few sewer and water, um, pieces. Uh, just south of, of Eleven there in the next few weeks, so that they can get prepped and ready for, um. The curb and the paving and everything. So if I can get, as soon as we get an updated schedule from the contractor, they were supposed to start April third, but that was pushed back because of the weather. Um, we'll get that posted up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burton. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Great. Um, we will go ahead and do commission comments, but when we start the presentation, it's any comments from the commission. I do have one. I wonder, Mr. Burton, could you maybe, um, provide a little bit of maybe a clarification of some of the inaccuracies that were presented in a, um, recent article. I know that they issued a correction, I think today. Um. Um, on development here in Helena, um, in the East Helena, but, um, maybe we just have it been opportunity for you to respond to that, but was, was not quite accurate.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I think there was verbiage in the article that really was comparing apples to oranges relative to building permit timeframes and subdivision review timeframes, and I do believe that that was corrected in the paper today. Uh, so they were comparing apples and oranges in that article. Um. I think the commission is aware, uh, that Director Brink, um. Understanding that he's been short of staff, uh, but has been working on the development review process. I think that there's going to be really good discussions to have in the near future with the commission on that. Uh, all the departments have been at the table and, uh, very excited about it and, uh, would also like the commission to know that based upon probably, uh, almost a year ago now, uh, the maps that we'd put together on, uh, Helen and's water quantity and quality. Uh, and we'll put together a map that demonstrates all the decisions that you've made within the last year, which equates to hundreds and over a thousand uh, apartments and condos and single family houses and where they're located. And, and also, uh, affordable housing investments that can be represented on that map as well, including, uh, one point five eight million that you've allocated to the, our Redeemers project through Rocky Mountain. Uh, so, uh, there's been a lot of progress made. We will take the time to put that information together so that you can look at it comprehensively and speak to it moving forward.
Thank you. Um, okay, so before I move to presentations, um, I think since we do have so many presentations, I wonder could I just get a show of hands of how many people are here to public, give public comment on, um, anything other than ARPA in our department reports? Okay. So I think what we'll do in the interest of time, because we do have I think eleven, um, two presentations and then eleven report or, or nine reports. Um, we'll do public comment after the two presentations, special event code changes, entry protection policy update, and then for all of the department reports, we will take public comment on all of those department reports at the end of department reports. Does that work for everyone? Okay.
If you don't, Mayor Pro Tem, just a question. A, the ARPA general fund, would we also include that in the lump of department reports with comment at the end?
That's, yeah.
Okay, I, I would say maybe we separate that one and do public comments. I think members of the public are here for that one, and sitting through eleven presentations may not be.
I guess that's what I was unclear. Can you raise your hand if you are here to give public comment on ARPA?
I guess that's us.
On ARPA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a request.
Okay, so we'll just take that one. We'll, we'll break out ARPA and then, um, do the, the others in interest of time. Um, so if we get, keep the presentations to five minutes or so, that would be ideal, and then hopefully we'll have some fluctuation. I see some giggles. Let's, we're, we're going to work hard to be out of here.
Hoping that you have your phone set.
Oh, I will. No, no Megan will today.
Question, madam.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, what song do you have on that today?
And I'm actually going to keep it silent, and I'm going to keep my eye on it. I know you like my country music, but.
Mayor Pro Tem, we do have the timer up front too, if you'd like to use that.
Um, let's also have that set for five minutes.
Five minutes?
For each of presentations.
Well, now you're asking because I haven't reset it.
If we can. Okay, so we will go ahead and start with special event, uh, code changes. I believe it's City Attorney Doctor and Director Knopki.
We both look at each other. Thank you, Mayor Pro, Pro Tem Commissioners. I will, uh, take a shot at doing this, and then David will, uh, follow up and get whatever I've missed. Uh, special event code revisions, I think you've heard a little bit about them already, but this is a presentation for you on what actually we are hoping to bring to you in code revisions very shortly. Title nine is reserved, and that would be a new title that would be entitled special event permits and, and special event, uh, it would be one section of code that would be for special events for all of the city rather than special events being throughout the code, which is how it is right now. A permit would be required for all events, parades, tours, vendors, and that would be issued by the Transportation Systems Department. We've included tours. That was a change because there was, uh, in the past, no allowance for things like the tour train. We all know that's been going on for a long time. Um, the tour train and then for any new pedal pub buses, that is a potential for the future, and that's the ability to allow for those within our code language. We added some event size requirements for a thousand people or above or under, and some different requirements for those events, and that's for spectators and, uh, participants in whatever event. Uh, for smaller events, submission of the application thirty days ahead, ninety days for larger events. Um, larger events can, uh, if an agreement would be required, and it can be for multiple years in the event that there is no changes, no material, material changes to the events within that multiple year permit allowed. Um, they would be required to give an update on non-material changes to events, but as long as those happened, the, the events could still occur within that time frame. Like the Governor's Cup. I mean, we see that every year, and it's in the same place, same event. It's just changes in what we mean by non-material. Our dates obviously would change every year, and that would be something that would have to be updated. And a, a special event fee would come with that, and they'd still have to do it every year, but they could still have this five-year, multiple-year, uh, agreement. Uh, the fee would be established by the commission, and it would include a one-hour meeting with city staff uh, for logistics and planning. After that, an hourly charge would, would apply for staff time, and again, that would be established by the commission, so that's another action would have to occur after these code changes. Insurance would be required for all permities, including even block parties, um, on right of ways. And, um, that is something you may have already heard about, but and will have to discuss, but that is something would be in the proposal, would be for insurance from all permities. Um, I've already mentioned the organization of the code. Those provisions would be all in one place, easier to find, and it would then, uh, reflect, be reflected in a new application that is online, that I think you've already seen um, a demonstration of. So I think that's a really neat, uh, feature we can provide to, uh, organizations that are doing events. The, the added-on piece for special events then would be, because as you know, many of these events include alcohol. There would be an allowance for possession of intoxicating beverages. Well, there is right now an allowance for possession of intoxicating beverages, um, within city property and on city rights of way with a permit from the city commission in the past. The language would be changed to be a permit from the city manager or his or her designee. So it would no longer be something that has to come before this commission for issuance of an open, the allowance for open container for offense. That alcohol waiver, which is what I'm locally colloquially calling it, um, has requirements like, for example, and there's a, this is, this is a clarified, clarified in the new language, it had to be within a confined area, and that can be a clearly designated area with signs as opposed to being roped off. As you know, there are some areas that aren't easily roped off, and there was always a question within our code whether or not it can be designated by signs and placing people in areas to keep them out, in and out. Uh, and this would be a, this would be clarifying that. And then something that would apply to all permits for all of these would be code violations, and this is new as well. This was not in the code before. Code violations may result in revoking the permit and immediately closing of permit, permitted activity. Um, failure to remit payment could also result same. So those are a couple of things, legal things that weren't previously in special events code and would be proposed on your consideration within this code rewrite. That's, I think, the overall, um, majority of changes that you would see. There's, it looks like a lot of changes when you look at it, because like I mentioned, we've taken a whole section and moved it into an open section, so it's organized within its own title. But otherwise, I think that's the majority of the changes I'm looking at, David, to see if I've missed anything.
And Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, um, yes. Attorney Doctor covered, um, everything. Well, the biggest thing on the, that is the, the larger events, the ninety days. Just the larger the events, the more complex, the more time that we request. Most of them, most events do give us that, um, additional time, but, um, just to have it stated so that, um, any new events coming that might be, meet that larger criteria, you would understand that we need the thirty days or more to review those.
The piece that, that you won't see in here is, uh, you know, the application online. There's nothing really in code that says it's online. Um. And also just how it works. For example, we have the ability now to actually keep these permits within the M-Files, uh, you know, digital like a place to keep it, so that when they're all, are multi-year events, and you pull that up, you can see, oh yeah, there's no changes except for the dates and, and continue to, um, keep that in the M-Files location, and that'll be a really useful thing for us internally within the city to be able to better serve the event planners. Uh, but that's not really something that you'll see in the code, but it's complimentary. So they go together, and we hope to make sure that they can, can work well together.
Question to the commission. Commissioner Logan.
Comment, uh. Really appreciate, it's been a little over, really appreciate the work on this. Um, over the past few summers, it's been a vote that has been difficult for me from the standpoint of how the, an event related to the ordinance and, um, sort of that temporary suspension of ordinance in order to allow the event to drive forward. And so not having that sort of disconnect there and realizing the work that it took to get there, I'd like to say thank you all for, for, um, working on that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, just a question. I'm not sure who it's for, but I know there has been, uh, there was a working group that talked about this and consulted local business. Could someone give just a high-level overview of was it a public process or what was the process? Um, and how did we get input on it? I think it all sounds really good. I'd just like to hear a little bit from for the community about how that was done. Thank you.
I think that's a good question, David. I think he's been involved mostly with that public outreach.
So Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, we started with, uh, a few events that our hopes were to get this out by, you know, the beginning of the year, but with some um, working through the software, it took a little bit longer. So we had some events coming up, um, that took place in March, St. Patty's Day, which ended up being canceled, but um, some other recent events that we put out to those event organizers to try out the application and see if we had any glitches or needed fixes. And then, um, we took those, we revised it a, a bit from o- other comments from staff and those event organizers, and then we've given it out to the next. So we're not delaying any of the events. We gave it out to the next batch of um, events organizers for them to submit their events and see how things are working. Our next step is to put it out to, uh, to the BID and to the lar, to the larger community to, um, to look at and see what their thoughts are. Um, our intent was to get that all out in a, in a better public process, but with the interest in time and the events that were coming up. We wanted it all captured within M-Files starting this year. So that's, we modified that kind of public process and, and used some of those earlier events as, um, tests so that we could see if there was any fixes that we needed to get before we put it out to the general public.
Yeah, and I would just add, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioner, that we started out the multi-department meetings with meetings with the chambers, BID, DHI, and large event holders, uh, at the front end of the process, so. I think, I think for all those who have a vested interest in anybody else who wanted to participate, I think it's been a pretty public process, process.
Do you have a question on, um, so for is, is a permit language required for, for example, I'm thinking in particular um, on the walking mall outside. So before we, it was a, they had kind of a summer-long, um, open container, I guess, in front of, on the walking mall in front of Popcorn and um, Ten Mile, and then I'm going to make an assumption that we'll probably get the same ask on the other end of the walking mall with, um, books, place, and, uh, you know, their doors opening, not the name, I know. Um, Brothers Tap House, Tap Room.
There you go.
Sorry, uh.
With the confluence.
Or the confluence. What happens with that within this code?
I think that's the part that's.
No, um, Mayor Pro Tem and, uh, Commission, so anything like happening on the walking mall, we would request the special event to be, um, because there's mul, there's a section in there that you can do multiple days.
Okay.
Um, and we would ask that those dates be listed and that we could review the timeframes. And then obviously, you know, if something comes up, the special bank comes into town or stops by, then we could look at that in a case by case, but basically any special event oper, um, operating on public right-of-way or city-owned property is going to require a, a special event application.
And then my other question was, um, do we currently require insurance for block parties? I'm thinking in particular of like the Ventonia block party. Um, do they need insurance currently for that?
So Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, the code currently would require that, but there has been some waivers of that requirement in the past, uh, specifically thinking of some that have inquired with me and have been allowed a waiver. Uh, I think there was some discussion about that internally, and because it's on city right-of-way and city property, uh, we continued what is currently in code in this proposal so that we're protected in the event that something happens on city property for an event that we're not actually hosting. Um, and MMIA also requires that we do so, and so it's pretty common across the, across the state that, uh, insurance is required for those types of events.
I think it might be helpful if we can give a heads up, because I mean, those, the, the couple that maybe are not as in tune of these updates are happening. I think the bigger events, obviously, they've been in the process. But I'm thinking like Ventonia in particular, um. There's a, I mean, a, you know, a couple others that have started to grow to be bigger than just folks who live there. Um, maybe just giving them a heads up that this is coming if it's been previously waived. If, any other final comments? Okay, we will move to public comment. Is there any public comment on the facility code changes?
Mayor Pro Tem, I have my one one.
Excellent. We will go ahead then and move to, um, tree protection policy update.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, so as we discussed with the, the Rodney Trees and what came out of that, um, situation, we have worked with urban forestry and the Parks Department to put together some um, protection, preservation standards. As you may recall, we, we're going to start with the Missoula's as kind of a, a template. Urban Forestry and Arborists um, refined that language and pulled some language out of, uh, current Nancy standards. Um, so in a nutshell, you take the three diameter inches, you multiply it by two, and then you, instead of keeping the units, you convert it to a feet, and then that's the diameter of the tree protection zone that needs to be placed around that, um, that particular tree. And then within that, um, so example, a twenty-inch tree would be forty-foot diameter, um, protection zone. And within that, that is also designated, it is a tree protection zone, but it's also equated to the critical root zone. And so inside a quarter of the critical root zone, there shall be no impact or root cutting. Um, inside half, there shall be no cutting of roots, you know, three inches or greater or added bill or trade lower range to be limited to two inches, and the work area should be modified by an ISA certified arborist. Seventy-five percent undisturbed. And then outside that half must preserve a minimum of the fifty percent of the undisturbed root area. That's just some guidelines for them, but obviously anything that the certified arborist onsite uh, would see that was concerning or whatever could change, um, those guidelines. So if they see, you know, a big, uh, taproot they got damaged somehow or, or something like that, then they would make that determination at the time. Um, so these are just going into their urban standards. Matt, uh, updating their section eight of protection of trees during construction to basically, um, give us a more robust, um, protection for those trees. So in the interest of time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Really.
Two minutes and twenty seconds. Any questions from the commission? Um, I, one quote. Do you believe this, if this had, we had had this in place before, we probably could have avoided some of the um, unfortunate end to the trees on Rodney?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, no. Because the location of the infrastructure that was being replaced, not only just the pipes, but the curb and gutter sidewalks and, and also the street um, invaded into that critical root zone, um, to the point of, um, them being determined that they were compromised.
That's okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. Uh, Director Knopki, I was reading through this. Thank you very much for this report, and, uh, wanted to see where public comment would fit into this before moving forward with tree removal, like what we had with, like what we did with uh, with Rodney Street. We had a meeting with them. Is that going to be a part of your plan as well? Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, so the first outline point is that the Parks and Rec Director or Designee shall review all projects involving the public property, and the project is conceived and continued through the planning, design, construction, and maintenance. So the trees will be basically the, one of the first steps that we do for, um, any designs have a, a topographic survey done, which would capture where those trees are located, and we would, in that, start, um, denoting the diameter, trunk diameter, and then basically a circle would be put on those crunks. And as we're looking at the design, if they're being infringed upon by the design, whether it's, you know, widening the street or, or replacing a pipe, then that's when we would start having the discussion at that time, when, at the beginning of the process. You know, in, in some cases, we might be able to move things around. In other cases, you know, you know, unfortunately, s- some of the trees were planted in places where they were near pipes, and that's just um, unfortunate case that we have in, in some areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, um, and Director Knopki. I think I'm just sort of, um, going a little bit where you just ended your sentence, but do we anticipate that there are other parts of town that are going to need upgrades where a policy like this isn't going to matter? Where a policy like this isn't going to matter and if so, do we have thoughts about? How we handle those? Cause if you're saying that this policy wouldn't have made a difference on Rodney Street. What can we do? Um, I think this is valuable and super important and I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind it, but anticipating that there might be other areas. Where this policy is still not going to make a difference. Do we have thoughts on what we need to, uh, to mitigate, prevent? I don't know what.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, I think that would greatly depend on the age of the trees in that area. And the, the extent that they are impacted by the project. Obviously, um, we could take a look at and if it's just purely a, a street and curb and gutter project. And they were starting to impact the trees, then we could look at just not doing the curb and gutter and doing a, a melon overlay, um, on the street. There, there are options out there, but again, there are some locations that if a water line that's directly underneath. Um, a row, uh, you know, a side of the trees or something that needs to be replaced due to maintenance or, or some catastrophic. Catastrophic failure, then, um, again, this policy wouldn't. Be as, uh, useful, but we will, I mean, for the. Other projects moving forward, we'll use this policy in practice to, to look and see how we can mitigate those, those, uh, impacts.
Great. Um, we will now open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Pro Tem, I have none online.
Okay, go ahead and move on then, um, on to the current presentations, um. That will do ARPA and the General Fund Savings Update, um, this all bits and Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, this evening, we do not have a presentation. None of the information has changed. Um, you do have in front of you a report of all of the ARPA spending to date, um, sorry, general fund savings that was created. Um, through ARPA as well as, uh, general fund savings that was created through the CARES Act, which was a request from the commission. So that comprehensive report is in front of you. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to. Help, but you have all that information, so this is a time that's available to you to continue to discuss further allocations if you choose.
Any discussion from the commission?
Sure. Then, thank you, um. See. Bring up the document I had, so in, in the recent past, I think the, the last, uh, administrative meeting, I had. Talked about a couple of different things and I'll just briefly touch on them. And I understand there's maybe a staff update to, to one of the, um, items that are areas that I had proposed. One being, uh. Trees down on Rodney and perhaps the allocation of ARPA funding for more mature trees than. And I mean, forgive me, no arborist, but then let's say we were planting satellites. And, uh, a citizen from the neighborhood, uh, had done some pretty significant research since then. And came up with the. Costs, which I think might end up being kind of low, um, relative to what Mr. Knopki. Informed me up before the meeting, but. A hundred and ninety-five trees roughly between ninety-two and then she broke down into two different. Uh, species of trees, uh, ninety-two thousand four hundred, two hundred and twenty-three. That's just trees. Don't have any, um. Estimates at all for the installation of said trees, but I thought perhaps we could just. Dog ear. A couple of hundred thousand. Just throwing the idea out there and if we could maybe, uh, director. For your consideration. Uh, maybe not necessarily committing to it, but perhaps just setting it aside until we find better information or. Or, or maybe we will have that here. Uh, but Mr. Knopkin did have some information relative to the idea that I brought forth and then followed up with one other. Item that I brought up in the past, if I may.
Director Knopki?
Uh, commit, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, so we did receive some, um. Information both through our arborist and through Garden Works on, on trees or larger caliber trees. For the most part, they're, they're not available for this season. Those orders have been placed and nurseries have received them, uh, as far as next year. For the number of trees that are being considered, they're still skeptical if they could, um, fulfill that order or even. Just a, a larger caliber tree, say, you know, something up to like a two and a half inch. But as far as, um, you know, any larger trees than that, there is very limited, um, quantities on hand from my understanding. But I do know that, um, working with Garden Works and through the Arborists, they're checking with some, um, other nurseries that are. Outside the area to see if nursery still with our. Climate zone, so the trees would, um, you know, work for our climate zone, but. Outside, say, up in Canada or Idaho, they're looking for additional, you know, trees that may have some availability. As far as installation of those trees, any installation is going to depend upon the caliber and the size of tree. Um, some of those trees could be, you know, small, you know, upgraded, uh, to like the two inch caliber trees can probably be done with. Within some of the current estimates, but as you get bigger. Uh, if they have root balls, um, associated with them, then you're looking at, um, excavating with them, uh, you know, say a mini X or a backhoe. So just depending on that would, would, um, increase the cost. The other, uh. Issue that the Arborists brought up is these larger trees with the larger root balls wouldn't be able to be planted back in the same. Spot as the, um, previous trees, because the stump grinding only goes down so far. And they basically can plant the smaller trees in those same general area. And as those stumps decompose and fertilizes the soil and, and helps those trees grow. But the larger root balls would have to be located in a different spot where there wasn't a previous tree to be able to get down to a sufficient depth. To cover those root balls. Um, one piece of information that they did provide, the Palsbald did kind of a. I wouldn't say a similar planting, but did a plant, a, a large number of plantings of two and a quarter inch caliber trees and the trees themselves. I think this was last year. In what were nine hundred dollars a piece and that did not include, um, installation, um, and that's all the update that I have at this point.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. A couple of quick questions. I think I heard you say a hundred and ninety-five trees.
Yes, that was the estimate that I was giving.
I, I'm not so good at the whole spatial geography thing, but that seems like a lot of trees for Rodney Street, so I'm wondering how many trees were removed? Is, is that number actually the number that we would need?
So there was, um, somewhere between that number, a hundred and seventy trees that were removed. Um, a lot of those were done prior to, that were already scheduled to be removed, that were in the plan set. And that are in the current contract. I think it's around seventy or eighty trees that were removed. This last round that were impacted, but I cannot tell you that those are the accurate numbers and I apologize that I don't have those, but I'll get those, um. More accurate numbers too.
But the, the very, very large trees, that was not a hundred and eighty very large trees.
No, no, I, I, I mean, we would have, we could categorize them, but they, they were. Big, big to, to smaller trees.
Okay, that is helpful. And then just one other quick follow-up if I might, um. The, it looks like some new trees are in there already. Is that? Has that happened recently? It's now that the big trees are gone, you can see things a bit more clearly. Are those very new recent plantings or is that from a previous chapter and where does that fit in?
So Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, those trees that you see planted are from, um, part of phase two that occurred last summer. So some of those trees were removed early in the spring and as they progressed up or down, however you want to look at, um, Rodney. Um, they planted trees, um, towards the fall, I believe. And so some of those trees were part of the contract of, of the argument place.
I guess city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and I just wanted to add that in discussions with the Arborists, there's also a limit on how big we can go. And I think it's two to two and a half inches because the root ball is so big between the sidewalk and the curb.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, that is depending on how we get the trees, whether they're bare root or. With the root ball, it would impact how big the, they could go because of, um, disturbing the adjacent infrastructure or so. Yeah, so there's some limitations there.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, uh, Director Knopki, um. I'm looking at the list of approved and permitted trees and the, do you have specific trees that are going to, going to go into Rodney Street? And or it are the local folks that are there, or do they have a say into what type of tree? Goes in front of their property or do you have out of this list of twenty or fifteen, you, you can pick? For them.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioner, so the city arborist chose two, um, species of trees, the bur oak. And the, um, Lewis and Clark elm. Um, and that's. He would be able to speak better to his planting plan to diversify the canopy within the city, but those are the two. Trees that he built, um, would be appropriate for along that.
I believe the standing practice in other neighborhoods when we're pruning is that if you have a particular. Tree that you are, that's within the approved list, that they will. You know, you can give them a call and they'll, they'll try to meet the need that you're asking for. Um, city manager.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and with the plan that was in place, we have those trees, right?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, yes, those trees have been either planted or on order for planting. And that was the majority of the trees, um, that are coming out of the contract. These last ones that were removed were. Around that sixty-five, seventy trees. So those would be the ones that are still incoming, the Arborists has ordered those and they're, they're due to arrive this spring.
Mayor Pro Tem, just kind of a last minute thought, I guess, um. Originally, I'd, I'd, um, brought forward this idea. In hearing from a resident or residents about, about the idea. Okay, could the trees are gone, is there a potential for more mature trees? And to the extent that they were. Willing to, let's say, do a GoFundMe effort to raise money that might. Make up the difference somehow between the. Smaller trees and something more mature. And I, that's where I thought this idea of using this one time money might be something that. Could help. The residents in the neighborhood now and, and so. Um, kind of the idea of bringing that forward. I don't know what that, I don't know what Director Knopki's, um. News means relative to the conceptual idea of whether it's done or what, but. Still like hold out.
And I think I would just, I think there's a couple of other items that we're still waiting on more information on, including the Trail Rider. Program and where the vehicles are and, um, what the options are, so I, I think that. If we can, um, I'd be interested in holding off and I think that we just kind of have these dog eared a little bit. And I mean, I don't know where one is, but, um, certainly. Still in my realm of, you know, what's out there for consideration. So I think it'd be helpful if we could. Wait to get all of the information if there are trees in Canada or Idaho that we are able to get this year. And then also that additional information on the Trail Rider, um. Uh, shuttle program, um. That's where I'd prefer to go.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a, a question. My recollection of the last admin meeting was that, and I'll, I'll paraphrase that there were the left field ideas. And that the mayor wanted to think about what he thought about considering left field ideas and I don't, I missed the Monday meeting, so maybe something was discussed. But I'm still unclear about as a commission, are we considering things that have not been considered? Are new ideas still welcome? Um, and I know there's only four of us tonight, so maybe we can't get consensus, but. I think it would be helpful for the community, because I've been asked by several organizations, our, our applications open again and I don't have an answer. Um, so I don't know how we feel about trying to get to consensus on that tonight, if we want to schedule getting to that answer. But I don't want people to spend time putting together new applications or gathering a bunch of information if we are not going to consider. The, the left field.
One final comment from left field. Reiterate, I think I've said this, uh, a couple of previous administrative meetings, something for us to think about if we're doing anything with or not. Is one time money relevant to a solar project? And, uh, I, I spent a little road time with previous sustainability coordinator. Going to meetings across the state and, and I think he said something like. Oh, certain dollar figure per kilowatt. For a solar project that, uh, I think it was three as a rule of thumb. And fifty kilowatt. A raise being kind of. Something that would be appropriate for a city owned building, so there's maybe a hundred and fifty thousand out there that we could put toward a. Solar projects. Just something to think about for the future. Thank you.
Also on my list from last time, I think, I guess my comments would be, I, I know the mayor wanted to be part of that. Discussion, um, and I'm not opposed to left field ideas, but I'm also only one commissioner, so. I, I, I guess I would say if we're not ready to make any decisions right now, I think it's, um, I think we already got an email today about. You know, another idea. I, I'm not looking for an additional formal process per se, but, um. I think that we have a few things that are out there that are worth considering for the remaining funds, um. And, um. I don't know, I, I think maybe at the next admin meeting, if folks have additional items beyond what, you know. For example, Commissioner Logan's kind of flushed out more of this discussion. Um, I, I think that we can, I'm open to that. I don't know where the rest of the commission is though.
I agree. I think, I think whether it's, they're open or not, I think at least having the commissioner suggested at a previous meeting. That having one admin meeting focused on just the ARPA, so we have time to discuss it, it might be helpful. Um, I'm interested in scheduling another meeting to talk about that.
And I think Kevin, the full commission, we can get a full bonus.
So, um, maybe I would suggest, um. Prior to our next admin meeting, um, maybe the city manager's office could. Check in with. The members of the commission and, you know, we can all be prepped in terms of where your agenda is. Um, and then make decisions from there when full conclusions here.
So Mayor Pro Tem, I might, so we are collecting left field ideas that we may or may not consider depending on the consensus of the full commission at the next admin meeting.
I think that's fair, I mean.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, from the staff perspective, we left it with the commission at the last meeting. Uh, we also stated that we'd leave item and, or the item on the agenda to take further direction when you're ready to talk about it. Uh, if you want us to help frame a discussion, uh, we can do that. Um, and setting aside a full administrative meeting in the middle of the budget, uh, we can do that. Um, it's gonna, gonna push him off a lot of items down the road. Um, but if there's any direction that you have between now and the next meeting. That would help formulate the approach that you guys want to take. Uh, please send it my way and we'll tee up a discussion for you to give us further direction on how you want to structure the discussion. Uh, again, I, I just qualify that. The, the money is sitting in reserves, you complied with all the federal requirements, so. It's at your timeframe that you engage in further allocations.
And I think maybe just to translate that, we're not, we have already met the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six deadlines. Because we have already allocated that to a, uh. General fund. General fund, is that accurate? Um, so we are not bound by, we are no longer bound by the federal timeline.
That's correct.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, if at our next, whenever the meeting happens, it's scheduled for, if we could review. Um, the contingency item as well. Just add that to our conversation to make sure that it's it's just sort of been sitting there and we haven't checked in on that in a while. And it might be useful if we're going to be talking about allocating additional funds to just make sure we know how much we're talking about. Uh, and then the last thing I will say is I I do know that I have received a couple of. Uh, projects, including from Good Samaritan who's here this evening. Um, so just in the interest of our community partners knowing what we're doing. I think our message is that if there is a compelling project that. Wants to be considered barring a formal process, I'm I'm kind of looking at you all to correct me or. I know there are community partners listening tonight, and I'm not sure they understand, are they? Can they come at us with new projects or not? I think I'm hearing that if there is something that a a community partner wants us to hear about, then they should reach out.
I mean, I think I'm, we're always open to that, I'm open to that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Um, okay, so with that, we will open it up to public comment.
Oh, yeah, I might just. Get some clarification, given the. Uh, intensity of the budget scheduled over the next administrative meeting. Would you like our office to work with the clerk's office to potentially set up a special commission meeting for that purpose is is would that be accurate? Or should we?
Um, I I wonder if it might be helpful to get the budget meetings scheduled first. Yeah, because I'm, I think. Director Danielson.
Yeah, thank you, if if I may, um, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner. Um, we have queued up every admin meeting between now through May for budget sessions. With adding also two special sessions. If you were to supersede any of those. With with presenting, you know, setting aside one of the meetings for ARPA. Um, I would say we either couldn't get through all of the budget sessions, or we would have to set up another. Special meeting for budget, if you wanted to.
So my preference would be not, I'm only one person, my preference would be. The budget is on a timeline. ARPA is not. On a timeline. And I get, we should maybe start calling ARPA because it's. Reserved funds, yes, general fund savings, thank you. Um, those are not on a timeline, and I think that are, in my opinion, we know that our budget is going to be. I think maybe a little bit. We will have hard decisions this year, maybe compared to previous years because it's kind of been leading up to. With the market priorities that have, we need to address, et cetera. I would, I would prefer to. Have those other two meetings finalized in addition to the admin and then. You know, put out maybe some options to the commission, but I do not, I have no interest in. In superseding the budget meetings because those do require timeline.
Mayor Pro Tim, I absolutely no interest in superseding budget timelines either. But I would, I personally think, again, given the community need and the fact that allocations from general fund savings. Um, those conversations are linked to the budget, I don't want to push it until the budget is done, so. Even though I am the the worst person to get for a special meeting, I would be in favor of trying. Or at a minimum, at least putting on one of our agendas a conversation about. Wh- what amount are we talking about for remaining general fund savings and? Are we open to new projects, just putting chipping away at the issue? Instead of delaying it until the end of the budget cycle, because I think there are needs in our community that are pressing. That would be my preference.
Christian Morgan.
Mayor Pro Tim, uh, totally agree with that statement, I I. I think the budget is is, uh, we don't want to take away from that. I do, um, I I'd be very much open to a. Session, a special work session to deal with this with. What what was formerly known as ARPA.
Mayor Pro Tim, I think I've got some direction, uh, we can. Tee up another discussion when the mayor is available to get further direction on our bus. And from that discussion, uh, and we can summarize the reserves. And get further direction on. A process that you want to proceed with.
So with that, we will open it up to public comment, is there any public comment on these general fund savings formerly defined as ARPA? Yes, Mr.
Mayor Pro Tim Commissioners, I wanted to come tonight because I started looking into genders every week. To find out what's going on instead of just listening to what's going on around the community from nonprofits. We need to know this, we've got some very serious needs in town. With the homeless and providing programs and what to do, and I think Good Samaritan has been very successful. Getting some people employed and housed, but there's another step we need to take and we would like to address that with. The what was ARPA funds to get us started and kick us into a start for some projects downtown.
Um, I remember the link when I clicked on it, it said it didn't exist anymore. So I wonder if you could maybe send that in.
Okay, oh, yeah, oh, thank you, and this was very helpful. Very, very helpful, thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Commissioners, I just would like to say that a hundred and ninety five trees from Rodney came actually. From the city plan that was dated on August fourteen, twenty twenty. And in the legend on that, um, there were ninety trees to remain and ninety three to be replaced. And then twelve new trees to be planted. So if those the trees that were then cut that were to be remained, that's a hundred and ninety nine trees that were. Nice, they're to be planned, so that's from Tony and tonight.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, thank you, we're gonna get through the next eight presentations in one hour and two minutes. So next up is open lands major projects for the season, and I think it's Mr. Williams.
Mayor Pro Tim Commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm talking about three major projects that the Parks Department has planned for the Open Land Division. In twenty twenty three. One of the projects is the Upper Deport Project, which involves the implementation. Of recommendations of the Upper Deport Working Group. That you may recall was convened by the city about a year and a half ago. And Karen Reese is here. Karen Reese was the home act representative on the Upper Deport Working Group and Lindsay Gilstrap from Helena Trail to last just stepped out. We're super excited to implement the recommendations of that group, they were a collaborative effort. Of recreational interest groups within the Helena area and this disability advocacy. Uh, individuals and they've come together and produced a recommendation to. Uh, construct the Universal Access Trail. Um, in the old shooting range trail area, so it would be directly north and south of that trailhead. And also implement improvements in the um, Upper Davis Bike Skills Course. And construct a sessioning trail to facilitate bicycle traffic. I will let the commission know that a portion of the Universal Access Trail would be pedestrian specific. Meaning that bicycles would be excluded from a portion of it. And um. The group worked long and hard, we had publicly open meetings and field trips. And collaboratively came up with some recommendations that meet the needs of of all the interests within the Helena area. Also excited to let the commission know that um, city staff has procured eighty five percent of the funding. Go implement this project in calendar year twenty twenty three. Morton, uh, happy to answer any questions the commission might have on the Upper Deport Project.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, the portion that would be close to bikes, how long is that?
The entire Universal Access Trail would be roughly a half a mile and the portion um, close to bicycles. Would be about seventy five percent of that half a mile. And so that portion would be south of the old shooting range kiosk. To the intersection of Tucker Gulch and the Cox Lake Dry Gulch Road.
Um, just a quick question, and I think it's just needing to refresh my memory, this is the working group that came out of. This project kind of being put on hold and worked through. I think last year, is that, do I have my timeline correct?
You have your timeline is correct, so the original deboarded working group. Uh, was able to come to a consensus on implementation of the lower bike skills course project. And that was put in, uh, you know, we put that out there last year and that and that's being used by recreationalists. We reconvened a working group that was specific. To that portion of the deboarded trail that is south of where Davis Street dissects the deboarded trail. And this working group worked through the some of the issues that stalemated the first group. And were able to come up with answers to all the issues. Uh, the implementation of a universal access trail while still facilitating bicycle traffic in that corridor. So again, um, real excited, it was a very productive group. Um, worked through all the issues and I. Are we recently submitted the project, the you universal access portion of it to the Recreation Trails Program. Uh, grant program and we ranked six out of forty two projects in the state, so. Um, we did receive notice that we will give that funding. The other two projects that we have planned for implementation within the open land system. Are more administrative, it's the relocation of two trails on Mount Ascension. That are currently approaching a private ownership. And you may recall that that was the story that was covered by the Helena IR last fall. And recently last night, uh, by the television news. Um, those uh, projects have also gone through a public involvement process. We posted it on Be Heard Helena and received comments. And we think we can again meet the needs of the public, move the trails. And we're also going to work on identifying the private property line to try to. Uh, make some headway on the issues that that private owner is experiencing.
Any questions from the question on the those two? This might be a dumb question, they wouldn't be interested in just selling that part of the property to us, would they?
Certainly not, they do have a residence up there and um. These have been, some of the issues have been ongoing for a number of years, we've had a social trail that dissects their property that we've closed a half a dozen times. Um, so I think we're addressing some things that have been out there for a while. And we'll still have the same trails, they'll provide the same experience, they'll just be slightly moved and relocated, so. Uh, we'll do it simultaneous, you know, we'll build a new trail, close the old trail. And shouldn't have much of a public impact.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, without going into a whole lot of detail, you've also been working with the Fever family.
We have, and that's another project uh, that we're hoping to implement. In twenty twenty three, and again, it's a trail that's currently located on private property. That we are going to move or would like to move to a uh. Public access that we have to the Grand Cannon Boulevard. And in so doing, we would also um. Like to change the naming of the trail and that trails in that area a little bit to honor two individuals rather than just one individual. And so we're excited about bringing that forward to the commission in a month or so as well.
Thank you for that, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to code revisions to animal control.
Mayor Pro Tim Commission, uh, this is just a revision to. Uh, city ordinance under Title Five Police Regulations and uh, under chapter two, which is animal control. For this revision, we'd be adding the uh, T N R program, which is trap neuter and return. And that has to do with our cat population, our community cats slash feral cats. And the issues we've been having with those. I worked with the city attorney's office, Amy Hockaluck in the revisions and then also partnering with the. Lucy Clark Humane Society and making that possible because we can't do the actual uh. We can do the trapping, but the rest of it's going to be the Lucy Clark Maine Society, and I believe. Katie from the Humane Society is online, perfect, so any questions that way? So I've got a little bit prepared, I'll read that and then go from questions from there. Uh, so the trap neuter program is the effective process of human trapping. Community cats and sterilizing, vaccinating for rabies and other known diseases. As well as irritating and returning these cats to their original location. Um, how this process works and how I learned that it worked because it was, I think it was brought up by the mayor. City manager last October, we've been trying to get this going, so it was a learning process for me as well, but. Uh, so the process works is we identify the colony of cats, which are either community cats or feral cats. And um, currently in Helena, we actually have six to seven colony of cats. What is a colony of cats? That is ten to twenty plus cats living together. So we have those already. Once these colonies are identified, then we would use traps from the uh, provided by the Lucy Park Humane Society to catch these cats. Once we catch the cats, they'd be brought in for uh, spay neuter surgeries. Uh, the cats that are deemed healthy for surgery go through with the spay neuter vaccination and then ear tip. Uh, the reason it's ear tipped, um, they would remove about a half inch of the cats left here. And that way, if we were to recatch this cat, we would know that this procedure has already happened to the cat. Um, once this process is completed and the cat is clear medically, the animal control also will work and placing the cat back where they were originally trapped at. Um, there is. If they do catch a cat that is uh, checked out by medical staff and is deemed sick or injured. Or there's concern with potential illness or injury, uh, the medical staff can make further decisions regarding the cat's quality of life. Including the possibility of having to possibly euthanize the cat. So the overall goal of this ordinance revision with the tap of trap and on the return program is to. Uh, T N R eighty percent or more of the colony. This, this would give us the ability to manage the cat populations through spay and neuter as well as be able to control the transfer of diseases from cats to other animals. By the way of vaccinations. Um, Haver Police Department's Animal Control Officer is currently doing it in Haver. I want to say since two thousand eighteen, I provided in the agenda, he he provided us a letter, but they've uh. They have used this program on over four hundred and fifty cats, um, all the areas that they have implemented the program, they've seen a large reduction in the number of cats. Also, the health of the cats has improved and the amount of cats coming into their shelter has declined. Um, we received a letter of support from Molly Sunridge, who's an assistant professor of Anthrozoology at Carroll. And she says that the T N R program is actually mainstream across the US and supported by. Uh, credible animal wel- welfare organizations, um, again over the US. Um, she she feels in order for this program to be effective, I know we have a goal of eighty percent, but she feels that. For the program to be effective, fifty to seventy percent of the cats would need to be captured. Um, so again, this is just a revision to our current city ordinance. And I believe in with the help of our city attorney's office, the partnership with the Lucy Park Humane Society. Uh, I think the revisions there to the current ordinance to, we can actually make this a success and go forward with it. Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, a question for Chief Petty, has outreach been done to the colonies to get their input on the process?
That's a perfect question. And Commissioner Reed, there actually has been a lot of outreach in talking to the folks. Because there's definitions of community uh, cat caregivers. That are actually giving. That are actually giving care to these cats. And. Would hate to see these cats just be destroyed. So they're actually taking care of these cats. Our animal control officers have spoken to a lot of folks. Um, for and against. Uh, this program, so as far as community outreach being absolutely done, we're sending it on the media that we're doing this, no. But there has been outreach down uh on the ground. And also, there's outreach in within the revision of the city code that we must do.
Commissioner Logan. Any jokes?
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner Logan, the funding is the wages for the animal control officers and then the Lucy Card Humane Society with the spay and. Uh, neuter, it's either through grants and donations, but they take care of that. Um, and Katie may be able to speak more um on the monetary part of that, but um, they already have the traps. And we're just going, our animal control officers are going up and trapping the cats. And bring them in and then releasing them back.
That's totally sufficient, I'm just assuming a partnership and um. Just curious how it works.
Absolutely, there's, yeah, without the Humane Society and the the. The vet that they have on staff there, this process wouldn't be possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Axeliners, are there any comments you'd like to provide?
Um, not really, I think Officer Chief Petty kind of went over it all pretty well. Um, funding for our T N R program is currently provided um through a grant that we have for this year. Um, we have provided community outreach with the city of Helena uh. Community members just in speaking to them and people who have approached us over the years. Um, and we have been doing T N R clinics for. Those um community members outside of Helena city limits for the past year and have seen a massive success. In the number of um cats we've helped, we did a, I think about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five T N Rs last year. For our community members that could participate in the program and have seen a massive reduction in um calls that we receive about problem, public nuisance cats. Um, as well as an decrease in the number of cats coming into our facility that are either feral, unowned, um, including kittens. So it's a hugely beneficial program for. Everyone in the community and yeah, it's it's great, so I hope, I hope we can get it taken care of.
Thanks for all your work.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any kind of comments from the commission? Alright, we'll go ahead and move on to residential solid waste rate discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Commission, uh, we're gonna have uh, give a little discussion about the rate proposal. We have three rates for solid waste, we have a residential race rate, a commercial rate. And a tipping fee that is at the transfer station. Uh, we are only asking for an increase for the residential solid re- solid waste and we are going to ask for a dollar fifty a month. As an increase, uh, the commercial is going to say status quo, and then the transfer station tipping fee is going to stay at a. At the status quo with an asterisk because the tipping fee is a combination of the tipping fee at the landfill, which is Lewis and Clark County. And then the city of Helena's tipping fee, we are not asking for an increase with our tipping fee, the transfer station one, but. There is talk and the Lewis and Clark County is taking for a deduction of two dollars. A month to their board, there's nothing on that, so as that progresses, we will be bringing a tipping fee. If the county does anything and they're proposing a decrease, so uh we would uh come and talk about that at a future one, but right now, we're just asking. For the two dollars and or a dollar fifty a month, comes out to eighteen dollars a year. If we go to the next one, we can see that this is the tipping fee that has been through since two thousand thirteen. Uh, two thousand fifteen was the last time we asked for an increase, and from there, we have progressively asked for a decrease because of how we have. Interacted with the county and the management of the Lewis and Clark uh. Landfill and the transfer station through Pete, so it's just a uh kudos to him that he has been able to reduce that because of how he. How he has been performing with management, streamlined everything, uh, we would go up to uh. A hundred and ninety-four dollars a year, so sixteen dollars a month is all that it would go to, so it's uh. Back to almost two thousand fifteen rates where we saw that, so what we're looking at in the next one is what it, what it's coming down to. Is we've been depleting our cash funds, this is a fund that we have been just, we collect funds, we don't go out to do capital projects with loans. So we get cash reserves and progressively have been decreased and one that. That wasn't really taken into account that we came into was the subsidy. For curbside recycling, originally curbside recycling back in two thousand sixteen, when we reduced rates. Was we paid a subsidy, but as more and more uh customers came on board. The rate would go down and the subsidy for the city that uh would decrease and there would be no subsidy. But as we see is the. Customers haven't gotten to that point and the rate has increased and the city commission is uh. Decided to increase the subsidy and the subsidy for next year will be at the current. Level of customers, if we have a big boom and we get a lot more, this would go up, but is about the two hundred thousand dollars per year of what we would pay as a subsidy. Uh, for that curbside recycling that corresponds to the dollar fifty. Uh, a month, that is what we would generate for capital projects, uh, so it's kinda make the the um. Fund hole so we could be able to start getting the buildup of the capital again, and in total, we have paid. Today at about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in subsidies alone. Uh, if we go to the next one, just to show to show where we're at, is the collection, to go around, collect everything up, you're looking at eighty-eight dollars a year. Uh, about fifty percent of that disposal to go in and work at the transfer station, that is everything to do with transportation dumping it. And long hauling it out to the um landfill is about thirty-one percent or fifty-five dollars. Then the recycling, which. We fund in conjunction with Lewis and Clark County, Lewis and Clark County and us pay jointly into the recycling fund. Because we do interact with everything, we pay about two hundred and seventy-five uh thousand dollars a year to that fund. Is about eleven percent or twenty dollars, and then the curbside recycling at its current level right now. Is about fourteen dollars a year or eight percent, so that is just to look at where everything is going and so. The curbside is, it's come up, is starting to be a substantial part of what is the the residential assessment. And then if you go to the last one, this kinda just looks at where we rate everywhere else in the state, so you look at uh Tri County, which is the scratch gravel. Out in our county and Lewis and Clark County, you're looking at about two. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, Great Falls is rated our same level, except the public service, which is the private one. Is going to be more expensive, uh, billings, uh, you look in Missoula, they have, you know, very, very, it's all private. Landfill's private, they have no uh city run one, so that is totally a private. Uh, system that is out there, and so you're looking at more than double what we do, and it is so high that we actually have a. Uh, carrier out there or a collection service that collects. Uh, garbage in Missoula and takes it out to Tri County, they go all the way from Missoula to Tri County. With their collection trucks every day. So you can see where some of the, how much money can can be done, but once you get to a certain point, there's other private haulers to be in there, so. That point, I'll just answer any questions you have.
Manager Burton.
Mayor Pro Tim, it's my understanding, Director, that. With the subsidy of the recycling program, you've depleted your reserves.
Correct, that is the biggest one, is that's deleting.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, question maybe for uh the deputy director. What are the chances of getting that uh PowerPoint?
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner Logan, one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Any other? I guess, um, and this is probably for all of the rate discussions, this is kind of teeing them up. When we get into the budget conversations, is that when you want us to? Get into more of the weeds if we have them, yeah. Director Danielson.
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, um, we wanted to have the conversations with these um. Higher priority uh fee discussions with you today, um, our intention is to bring an actual resolution of intention. To the commission for this set of fees um at the end of the month. And then also just to pass a resolution to make them effective in May. So these, these fees that we've set uh for now are more high priority fees that we would like to to move forward, so. If there are any questions or concerns, um, any, any. Person that that is here representing their apartments is able to answer questions.
So I guess my question would be on. I mean. Over the last eight. Ten years, this is not a significant increase, and when compared to other municipalities, I'd say we're doing pretty well, however. I do wonder. Um, we're not gonna have the. Integrated solid waste master plan for probably another eight months, is that?
Two year.
Okay. Um. So not this budget. Um. I, I wonder if we. If we wanna have a conversation or where we have the conversation about. Um, what these subsidies look like and if. Can we get a bigger bank for luck in terms of recycling? In other ways or not.
Mayor Pro Tim, to answer that one is, we're gonna need this dollar fifty this year, just because we are starting to push our trucks off. That we no longer can do, we're pushing off a couple of side loads because we don't have the money, and so we're keeping others in line that we are. Looking at maybe having to replace some of the packer bodies and there's some transmissions that are going out, so. This is something that we are need just to keep the fun solvent, but the bigger conversation to. Do we do universal recycling? Do we look at a recycling assessment? Do we look at, you know, store separator, how we're gonna do the overall recycling? That will come next year with the, with the master plan and what we are going to look at, so we'll have a lot of options. A lot of variabilities and analysis on that one, so to answer your question, it'll be within next year, but just to keep this kinda solvent and keep going with. How recycling is going right now and how the fund is operated, it's a needed one, it probably was needed two years ago, but. You know, just under circumstances, we just uh were able to keep going.
Any other questions? Right, go ahead and move on to the last chance splash water park and pool, the discussions.
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, I believe that.
Oh, excuse me, sorry Sheila.
Smith is on, on the.
Oh, great.
Line to um lead the conversation for the next several fees.
Director Smith.
Yes, the next several fees, as as you'll notice, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Commissioners, um, four of the nine. Departmental reports are from the Parks and Rec Department, so with permission, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. If I could bundle E, F and G together, because that's all out of our office for the sake of time. Um, if that makes sense to you and you're okay with that, I will proceed.
Please do.
All right, well. We've got four items, the water park and pool. Park use fees, rec programs and the civic center, I'm gonna separate the civic center from E, F and G. As they're different animals uh in their own right and operations, so I'll start with the pool, water park and pool. Um, and again, this is a discussion for fee proposals for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four. For these four divisions of the Parks and Recreation Department. Um. The fee proposals include um moderate nominal fee increases for our divisions. Um, and I'm gonna make one overall broad statement for these three divisions and the civic center, uh, we put a lot of time. Um, with our managers. The finance director, the city manager, weeks if not months, and um. A lot of time and effort has been put into, you know, market analysis, much like we did with the golf course. Other communities with facilities and programs and offerings that are similar to ours, um, cost comparisons. And um with the increasing costs that we're all living with in our lives and within the city and within our operations, um, we're proposing. Um, small fee increases across the board, um, we didn't just. Determine that we're gonna do ten percent across the board and just move on, we put in the time and the work and made presentations to the finance director. And the city manager, and we've been really working hard just to make sure that we are where we need to be, and and to be honest with you, we're we're not quite there. Um, the expenses are exceeding, you know, the increases we're asking for, so, but we know it's gonna take time. So, um, with that said, the pool and um water park. And the rec programs are managed by uh Kate Perdon, who is in attendance today. And um to keep these two together, as Kate manages the uh. Uh, recreation programs and the water park and pool, I would like to kinda pull those together here and. Um. Let Kate just speak to the uh, the great things that are about to happen as we're approaching summer. And um. And we're open for discussion and any questions after, uh, you know, Kate, Kate speaks to uh the, what we have going on at the pool and with our rec programs.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, I'm Kate Perdon, the Recreation Program Manager for. The city of, at the pool, we are anticipating another great season, we're one of the largest employers of temporary. Employees in the city of Helena, we've got sixty-five temporary staff working down there. Um, we offer over a thousand swim lesson spots, we're open every day, so. We work hard down there to make sure that the pool is a a fun and affordable place for Helena's. Families and children to be, um, recreation, summer recreation specifically, we are on our twenty-six year of K's kids, which is our summer. Camp program, um, we take eighty campers every year. Um, and that runs the duration of the summer, we offer some tennis, some pickleball lessons, and we also partner with. The Skyhawk Sports Camps to offer a variety of camps for kids. And then in the summer or in the winter, excuse me, we run the. Ice skating rink, which had its best season yet so far, with six thousand skaters, so. What's going on in practice, Mike?
Mayor Pro Tim, if I might add to, yes, um, just in working with um Kate and the the rest of the Parks and Rec team, they. Um, I will add that they really uh did a lot of work. A lot of research, um, down to uh Kate preparing daily. Scheduling for the pool to determine hours and costs, um. Uh, to come up with their fee schedules and um, I, you know. They've been uh kinda hamstrung also a little bit with having to increase uh. You know, their temporary salary wages in order to even recruit people to wanna come in um and and help with these programs, and so. Um, I fully support all of their work and um, and and uh, and and. Recommending to the commission also that that I think that these are nominal. Rate increases that needed to try to offset. Some of the costs for these programs, um, that these programs are not meant to. Be fully self-funded, they, they are subsidized by the general fund, however, um, you know, as health insurance increases. Um, are gone up and trying to uh bring salary wages for the city up to competitive wages. Um, the increases are. Are, you know, they're, they're necessary and they haven't been addressed in in several years.
Questions from the commission? I do have um, just a couple, um, on it. With the resident and non-resident, I mean, how do you? I've always thought that has been an interesting thing because if I was, you know. Twelve and going to the pool and someone said. You wanna pay a dollar extra? So how is that working?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, it was a direction that we got, I think in twenty nineteen, um, so when you register for swim lessons online. You put in your zip code and then the software will assign whether you pay a resident or non-resident fee. But if you go to the pool, uh, the staff will just ask you if you live in city limits or not.
Honestly. Um, and then my other question was, um, the on the um tennis fees. Those are the only things that may, my antenna just kinda went up. Because some of the. Increases are like pretty significant, um, for the. Um, I. Not worried as much about the adult ones, but for. I mean, more than double for most of them, can you talk about? Can you talk about some of those increased fees?
Yes, Mayor Protem, traditionally we have been able to. Contract out this position to a tennis pro in town. However, last year we weren't able to to do that. And so these new fees reflect what it would cost. To cover the salaries of the tennis instructors at the at the rate that we pay them.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions from the commission? Thank you, appreciate it. So next up, we have the civic center.
And I've already stated this before, we have the Civic Center Manager Byron, you know, speak to, you know, current events in the future. Things are heading in a positive direction. We did do a market analysis as well to other communities that had civic centers or venues similar to ours. And I just want to, you know, thank Kate first of all for all the work that she's done and continues to do. And Byron, our Civic Center Manager is here today after I'm done speaking to, you know, talk about the the current state of the Civic Center, the future. The air conditioning projects coming down the road, we're going to have a twelve-month operation. We're ramping up for it. We have a great staff and a great team and Byron did a great job. You know, doing all the analytics of other facilities to get to where we are. So the discussion for these fee proposals for the Civic Center are nominal, but they're also needed. Because, you know, we we just need to keep up, you know, we can't take it all at one time. We're going to reassess all four of these divisions at this time next year. Because we we don't know what anything's going to cost a year from now. So to do these nominal increases, it's been five years plus for all four of these divisions since these fees have been addressed. So incremental gains and operational efficiencies are something that we're working hard together with all the managers. And we have a great team and I want to like hand it over to Byron here to just talk about where we are and where we're where we're going.
Thanks Doug, thanks Mayor Protem and Commissioners. To give a brief synopsis of where we're at right now. With increased event activity and inflation, we're seeing our operating expenses increase pretty drastically. While that's happening, we want to continue to maintain accessibility to the community. And our our current users and potential users down the road. We're mindful of about seventy percent on average year of our users are nonprofits or the schools or government. The demand for space that we have right now is unprecedented for the Civic Center, which is awesome in a lot of ways. But it's also made us kind of assess where we're at. And make sure we're we're charging a fair market price. Like Doug talked about, we looked at some comparable venues around the state. We're always in pretty close contact with these folks, but we we're seeing we're starting to lag behind a little there. The last significant increase to fees we had was back in twenty seventeen and it wasn't massive then. So to me and based off our analysis, we're we're a couple of years behind. A lot of that was due to COVID and trying to ease out of that. So we continue to ease out of that. These fee increases will most impact weekend ballroom rentals where we have two spaces over there. You know, we looked at where we spend our most time, where we're spending the most staff hours. You know, what equipment's getting used up quickest and looking at the the weekend ballroom rentals. For those reasons and the demand for space was really the focus. And what wasn't a set percentage kind of across the board, you see what I'd call moderate increases. I think with these with these fees, I think we will continue to maintain the accessibility as far as cost for users. But it it's going to put us in a strong and stable position as we keep getting busier and we look at. Any year now with the air conditioning, having two, three more months added to the event season, having this kind of. Locked and loaded will will put us in a great spot there, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? We've not been joined again yet, so Christian Reed, I don't think that.
Yeah. Mayor Protem, thank you very much. Thank you for the update on that and keep elaborating a little bit more on the HVAC. It's AC and three more months of performances.
Absolutely, Commissioner. So right now we we don't book July and August or very seldomly because it gets. You know, unsafely hot in there or uncomfortably. There's a few for, you know, some smaller weddings and some. Unique small events that we can justify having to make sense in late August, but it's going to open up that July and August calendar. And it's also going to do a lot to help make, you know, the last half of June, really all of June. And first half or all of September more appealing to to users to be in there. So it's, you know, adding almost a quarter to to our season. And I think our general model as far as how we're staffed and what amenities we have, things like that. We can continue that, that's going to translate into that, but there'll be other other costs that go up as we. Service those events.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Logan.
You know, I'm gonna.
I I was like, I'm surprised that.
Say something here. I I'd just like to say thanks to Director Smith and and Mr. Dyke. I really appreciate the work that you've done. It's a lot going on down there, a lot going to go on in the future and. Early on in our tenure, the Civic Center was kind of a. Tricky subject and and I I appreciate all that you all have done to really turn it around and and, you know, hopefully. Continue in that direction. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And then with that, we are on to our last item, please Department SSD Division fee discussion.
Okay, the discussion, I'll just stay in line with. The parks discussion. About fees increasing those. So the SSD is Support Services Division. Within that division, we have the records section, the records section is funded. By the Public Safety Mill Levy. There's really no, the only revenue are these fees, not that we count on revenue, we really count on the. Public Safety Mill Levy to operate out of. The fees that are in that section. Are based. But what we were charging were based roughly two thousand five. So in order to keep up with the cost of increasing constantly stuff that we keep hearing, everything's increasing in price, but also the wages I. When they they calculated wages back then, our records clerk were making, they use the wage of eleven dollars and fifty-four cents. And now starting wage is eighteen dollars for a records clerk and then you go through the five steps ending at roughly twenty-two dollars an hour. So. We're behind to say the least. So the fees that we've implemented or that we've come up with, we've vetted with other agencies our size. One thing that makes us unique here in Helena for. That record section is that we we do the PD and the SO Sheriff's Office for the records request. And we file all the warrants from municipal. Justice Court, District Court, all come through those through our section and a lot of agencies, Bozeman, Great Falls, Missoula, what you'll see is. City has their records division, county has their records division and it's separated. So we are unique in that matter that. And we're unique in how we're funded as well, but in order to keep up these fees, need to go up. I can go over a few of them if you'd like. Or if you have questions on any of them. Also, these fees were ran by the SSD Board. And got approved prior to me coming here to present in front of you folks.
I guess the only one that I. I guess I had a question on is the media. One and if. I mean, is. What does that look like? I guess.
That could be a USB to where we give, say you have a case and you want your the body camera from the officer. Any digital evidence, we took photographs at the scene, anything like that, we can save to a digital device. And that, you know, a digital device, you know, maybe USBs, nothing, but it's the time to put that on there is what we're looking at.
Okay, okay, that makes.
Yep.
My mind went to press.
No, and one thing else I'll mention, this call for service, the CFS reports, every time a caller is called in to dispatch a CFS has made, we need a call for service. So a lot of that is public information. However, what's not public information is personal identifiers. Medical information, so our staff has to go through and redact that. And how we were redacting not too long ago was copy after copy, black marker. We finally stepped into the two thousands and we got some redacting software. So, yeah, let's look at it a little better there. But we used to do the call for services or we're still doing is, they say you're coming in and getting one or two calls for service. Yep, you can get that. It's free right now. We're not charging and we need to be charging for those because of the time it takes. And the research for that person to go to take away from their other duties to fulfill this.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Logan.
I was trying to find the information out online. So I didn't embarrass myself with the question, but I'll go ahead and embarrass myself. So. The Public Safety Mill Levy.
Yes, sir.
Is that a permanent or is it sunset?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner Logan is permanent.
Thank you.
Can I, I might ask a follow-up on that. I, I anticipate that we'll probably be in a situation in the next few years that we have to go out for. Because it's not generating what it was originally going to cover. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Yeah, and Mayor Protem, I just just add that 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 was a county Public Safety Mill ready. Which included the expenditures that the chief's talking about from the Joint City County SSD Board.
Do we know if the county's considered what it would look like to go back out or?
I don't believe they've had any discussions in that regard, Mayor Protem, but. Certainly it gives us an opportunity moving forward and you know that on your. Priority list of things to review will be the Fire Department and the Police Department and we'll have the opportunity engage. The county in those discussions to see, depending upon where you go. How we might be able to match those services moving forward. We obviously had those discussions in the past.
This is just something you might want to know is that maybe we can include that in that discussion because I. Don't want us to have us in a position where we say. Yep, we're making these decisions about potential. Public safety levy, fire and HPD, whether they're separate or together. But not take into consideration and their potential for another one.
If I may, Mayor Protem, the Public Safety Mill Levy in the language. With then it says law enforcement service in in what it funds, it says law enforcement services and you see the second, third line says city, county, nine-one-one. Dispatch and records. So it is currently funded out of that that levy. And in the two-one-nine where records, well, it's basically, it is all the wages for all the dispatchers. All the records clerks plus a little bit of operating money that's needed for the records division. It's going to go somewhere else, but.
And they already. We negotiated their contracts.
We're we're currently in negotiations, yeah. We did meet, Sheila and I did meet with County Finance as well and just talked. Budget and will be thus far as in the goal, we will be presenting to the Joint Commission May second. Nine-one-one in this budget as well.
Any additional questions? All right, great job, everyone. Okay, maybe we'll all go public comment and then come back to you. I would like to open it up to public comment for anyone with a public comment on the department reports that you just received.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. So. What are the chances of getting this electronic?
A hundred percent, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. That's it.
And I don't know, Director Danielson, did you see what he was referring to?
Yeah.
Okay. It didn't have it, he didn't give it a name. It's the city of Helena allocations from general fund savings created by ARPA and it's. Everything from the beginning until now.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, just so you all are aware, the staff are always great about providing the clerk's office with all their presentations and PowerPoints before these meetings. So we'll make sure that you can have access to them.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I would like to open it up to any other public comment that is. Unrelated to the topics we've talked about today. None of them. Any final word from staff that was in commission?
Mayor Protem, if I could just say quickly with all the work that the parks people and civic center Doug chief. They really did their homework on these proposals and it's in addition to their day jobs. I just want to thank them all as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Makes me feel good heading into the budget. It's good at the budget. Keep that. Great job getting through this is five forty-six and this meeting is adjourned. That was perfect.